Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We come together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as a diverse community, a community with different backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures, yet one common goal, that is the betterment of this city. We come together to seek guidance, wisdom, and discernment during the deliberations that transpire this evening, and in doing so, we lift up Councilmember Fitzgerald, Councilmember Garcia, Deputy Mayor Martinez, and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. Amen.
(inaudible)
This meeting is called to order. Do a quick roll call. Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Present.
Councilwoman Christian Garcia?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
Present.
And I, Mayor White, am here with Joe Garcia being absent. We'll move on to our presentation from the Clean Energy Alliance.
Hello. Good evening. Mayor, members of the council, it's good to be here. Thanks for having me. My name's Greg Wade. I'm the CEO for Clean Energy Alliance, your community choice aggregation energy provider. This is just an overview of the brief presentation I'll give and happy to answer any questions at the end or during. Just an operational update, where you are with your various program offerings we provide, an update on rates, an update on programs that we're offering that can help folks save money and provide benefit to renewable energy generation and grid stability, and then just a brief overview on the energy programs plan we're doing. Right now, you can see here, this is the total accounts that we've enrolled in the seven member agencies that we provide energy for. You can see Escondido there highlighted in green. There's 53,190 customers enrolled in the Clean Impact Plus product. That's our default product. It provides 50% renewable energy with 25% additional energy that is carbon-free, so 75% totally carbon-free. Then you can see there the opt-ups to 100% renewable. Customers also have the choice to opt down to a 50% renewable product, and 148 of your customers have done that. You can see the totals there as well for all the other agencies. Word on rates, and before I get into the rates, just a little bit of a background. Most accounts are on a time-of-use rate. So, a time-of-use basically holds that there's different costs for different times of day. And here you can see the various breakdowns of those times of use. On the right hand, you see the super-off peak, where the rates are lowest, off-peak, where they're slightly higher, and then on-peak, where they're the highest. And you can see in every time of year, whether it's summer or winter, and on weekends, that peak period is from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and that's when people use the most energy. As you can understand through a work week, when people get home and start making dinner or watching TV or doing other things, that's when the highest demand is. You can see the shoulder hours both approaching those times, from 6:00 to 4:00 p.m. are the off-peak, and from 9:00 to midnight are the off-peak, and then super-off peak is where people use the least amount of energy, and that's when rates are the lowest. There's also a little, if you can see in the middle chart on winter, there's a two-hour, actually a four-hour period between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. during winter months, where you're also on super-off peak. I won't get too technical here, but unbundled customers, which CEA customers are, that means they're unbundled from bundled customers. That's SDG&E, where they provide the delivery and the energy generation to their customers. We, just as a reminder, Clean Energy Alliance only deals with the energy generation, the commodity. We do not distribute or transmit the energy that's still handled by SDG&E. So, when load departs from the investor-owned utility, in this case, SDG&E, in order to leave bundled customers that stay with SDG&E unharmed by rate changes or that bundled loads leaving, the unbundled load leaving the service territory, there's a charge, what's called a power charge indifference adjustment, and that's meant to pay for those contracts that SDG&E has provided or procured over the years to serve the customers that have departed. It's called a power charge indifference adjustment, or PCIA. Sometimes it's referred to as an exit fee, although PCIA's are paid for by a lot of customers, including there's a PCIA for bundled customers. But in our case, it's really an exit fee, and it's really intended to keep the bundled customers who stayed with SDG&E indifferent to our rates and to the amount of load that's left. And the way that's calculated, and this is a high-level calculation, is you take the investor-owned utilities portfolio of energy products, energy contracts, and you subtract out the market rate, the market price of those contracts at the end of a year on an annual basis, and then that gets the indifference amount. If you have an electricity portfolio that is higher than the market value, the PCIA is positive, and so our customers will pay a positive or higher PCIA. If the electricity portfolio is lower than the actual market value, then the PCIA is negative, and customers will actually see a credit. And this year, PCIA's through all our territories up until the calendar year, from February moving forward, have enjoyed a negative PCIA. So, at the end of last year, SDG&E's portfolio value was less than the actual market value of those contracts, so customers in your territory, your city rather, have been enjoying a credit on their bill. And through the, and as I'll show you, this is important because we have to compare our rates on an annual basis to SDG&E through a joint rate comparison. It's part of a legislative requirement. Looking at rates and keeping in mind you have winter rates and summer rates. Rates are always higher in the summer, where energy demand is higher. Winter rates exist from November 1st to May 30th, or May 31st, rather, and that's seven months out of the year. And as you can see in our current rates, and this is, there's a lot of numbers there. You can see the PCIA is the second one down from the top, and you can see on the blue section where all our products are, you can see it in parentheses, which means negative. And then on the bottom, you can just see the average rate. Now, this is for a customer's house, residential customer on a TOU, time-of-use DR1 rate. That's the, by far and away, the highest enrolled rate. We're currently seeing a $1.67 average per month savings, and then a seasonal average of $1,169, and that was for the winter months. However, when we get to the summer months, which just kicked in on June 1st, you can see here that average rate or average usage of 361, there's a premium being paid for the renewable content of our product of $8.66 per month, and a seasonal average premium of $43. The net average annual, if you average that out over the course of the year, is about $2.63 per month on average premium for the Clean Impact Plus product. Now, I will say that, moving forward, we just got the application for SDG&E's rates for 2026. It's called the ERA Forecast. That's the Energy Resource Recovery Account. Every IOU does this every year. They file an application to look at their rates and the PCIA's. That was done this last week, and we are right now analyzing that to see what will happen. The projected numbers that SDG&E has submitted would show that bundled customers would see a generation rate, which is the rates we also offer, increased in 2026, and a PCIA adjustment slightly increased for Escondido, but negative still next year. I caution everybody that this is the first application. They'll be making several more over the course of the year, including in October, where they will update that rate application. But right now, with a preliminary look at the numbers, an average winter bill savings would be about $16.97 compared to SDG&E, and the average summer savings would be $6.64 compared to SDG&E. Again, these numbers will change, so I caution you not to put too much credence on that until the end of the year. There will be a final rate update in December. I do want to point out that SDG&E just put its summer rates into effect and did send out a notification that rates were going up as well, so we're trying to assess and analyze what that looks like. So, some of the programs that CEA offers, one of the things Community Choice does is we offer a lot of programs to help benefit our customers. One of the things that, primary things that we've attempted to do is reduce GHG emissions, reduce customer costs. That's a big thing right now, as I'm sure you're all aware, at the state level and also local level, and to achieve yours and our other member agencies' climate action plan goals. So, one of the programs we've just launched is a Peak Smart Savers program. This is a program whereby customers who enroll, and you have to be on a TOU rate, would enjoy up to 30% rate discount for all times of the day except for the super-off peak time of the day. And then, when we call an event, and events are called when we know there's going to be a high demand for energy. If there's a heat wave coming, there's a cost escalation in the energy market, we'll call an event, and during that event, there'll be a $1.10 adder to the energy used during that 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. period. So, what that does is it gets these people enrolled in the program to adjust their use of energy, stay away from that 4:00 to 9:00 peak period time, so that when that high demand time hits, there'll be less stress on the grid, more energy available, and less likely instances of public safety power shut-offs. So, as I mentioned, the rate structure is you have 30%, up to 30% off for all times of the day except those super-peak-off period times, and then that $1.10 adder during called events. We can call up to 18 events per year, and it applies to TOU rates. So, we will notify customers that are enrolled in this program in advance via email, via text, so that they know this event is coming. This program also offers, for this first year of our pilot testing, bill protection. So, at the end of this first pilot year, if a customer did not realize rate savings by being enrolled, you'll get paid the difference of what that would have been. So, it's really a no-lose proposition. And you can enroll on our website, or you can call this number here to enroll in this program. We've also rolled out a SolarPlus program. That means solar plus battery, and so we provide that to customers with no upfront costs, no credit checks. We provide the solar installation, solar panels, and a battery backup for those customers, and it can reduce your use of electricity over the course of a year, and it can really help you to decrease the demand on the grid during peak times, because you can have that battery there that's there to support you during that time. You charge the battery when you get home, try to use that battery during the 4:00 to 9:00 p.m., and you really can decrease your costs when they're the highest, rates are highest. We've expanded the program. At first, it was just being offered through Tesla as we were building up this program. We now have expanded it to include many other contractors. We call our channel partners, and so it's really starting to, there's more interest in the program. Just as of last month, we've enrolled a lot of these contractors, more options. We've also provide services in different languages, which is key assistance, as well as white-glove service for installation. The current program, why did we do this? As I mentioned, it had limitations. For example, through Tesla, you couldn't install on a tile roof. Clay tile roofs are very common throughout our service territory, so it's an important part of our customer base, and we wanted to make sure everybody could be afforded this opportunity. We also offer now a blended rate, where you can build in the battery, the cost of the battery, and the solar panels into one rate, rather than paying separately for the battery, which was the prior program. This just shows the number of applications just as of last month. We're currently working on four in your neighborhood, and as you can see, it's already doubled in just the week that we've launched the channel partners, so we're hoping to get through their marketing of those partners, more access to people. We've also rolled out SolarPlus Connect. That's an income-qualified program. It's based and supported by our self-generation incentive program at the state level to provide customers with funds to offset the costs of those systems, and it can, on average, provide up to 85% of the cost. So, what we're offering is about a 55% rate savings, again, for income-eligible folks. Right now, the S-Gip income-qualified is for customers that are 80% of median income, and I'll show you what that looks like. And our Care customer has a rate of 30 cents per kilowatt hour with CEA and SDG&E, that's delivery and generation combined. So, it's a really good program for those folks who are income-qualified. Moving on to the battery bonus, this is a program that was asked for people who already have solar. When people were putting in solar, it was a big trend for quite a while, but batteries weren't really a cause of the day. And right now, with the new net metering standards, you really need a battery to make it economically palatable. So, we're offering a program where we'll provide the battery to those customers who already have solar. Provides backup power, time-of-use optimization, increased use of renewable energy, particularly during those peak times. Again, no upfront costs or credit checks. It's available through both our local channel partners, as well as the partners that we've contracted with. The Battery Bonus Connect is similar. It's funded also through S-Gip. The key here, though, is if you're an income-eligible customer with solar, you can get the battery for no cost. That means no rate. It's just, we'll apply for that funding on your behalf through our partner, Haven, and again, it's a really good program for those folks who want to add a battery to their solar. Right now, there's about 280 million statewide for these funds, and in SDG&E territory, that's about 80 million. So, we're actively applying on behalf of our customers right now. Just to give you an idea, this is, average area median income is on the left, 130,800. And for a family of four, you can see up there, those are pretty high numbers for some folks. So, 132,400, family of four is a low income, but the S-Gip funds actually go to moderate-income folks, and moderate-income folks are 120% of median, which is about 156,000 per year for a household of four. So, our hope is that there are plenty of customers out there that can take advantage of this program and get a free battery if they have solar. I won't go too much into detail on this. We are preparing a program plan, an energy program plan, to promote clean energy adoption, lower costs, really try to reach out to some of our communities of concern that might otherwise not be aware of these programs, help them get enrolled in something as simple as the Care and Fairer programs, which are widely subscribed at times, facilitate economic development, and to increase awareness and participation. This next slide is really long, and I won't go through all of it, but these are just some of the things that that plan that we're putting together will help to provide for our customers. And really appreciate your time. Sorry if I went over 10 minutes. I think I might have, but appreciate it, and happy to answer any questions if you have them now or later.
Awesome. Thank you very much for coming tonight and being here. My only question really is, for the solar and the batteries, it looks like you have a lot going on with that. How do people find out more information?
Yeah, so go to our website or call us at this, let me bring this number back up, because this is a good place to call. I should have had this at the end, right there. So, 833-232-3110. Easiest place to do it is on our website. You can go there, and on the upper right-hand corner, there's a Programs tab, and you can go look at those programs. We have them all lined out for you there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for the information. One of the things that I noticed is with solar, a lot of families are intimidated about solar, especially because people go, they usually hear about it at their door, and so they're not really sure, and then they'll throw, the people at the door will mention SDG&E or the state of California, and it's just, it can be shady sometimes, the people that show up at your doors and offer these programs. So, what you're saying is now there's opportunities, and you all have vetted providers?
Correct.
And so, pretty much, the public can now go to the website or call in and see what your list of vetted providers are, and then learn about the different programs. So, that's, this is a great, I think, thing for the community, because I've been, I know a lot of people who want solar, but they're just, you know, too scared to commit and afraid of being defrauded.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate that you're doing this, and maybe having some community engagement events where people, like workshops or something in places where our community members are would be great, so that they can learn and learn more about the Clean Energy Alliance, and then know that you are a trusted resource for those kind of programs.
That's a great idea. And just to speak to that, the channel partners I spoke of earlier are all going through training to make sure that when they engage with customers, they're avoiding those sort of predatory kind of words and things that affect people. We only allow our trained channel partners to use our name and provide resources that we provide. So, we're well aware of that. I've been living at my brother's house for the last several months, and I can tell you that I've been approached about five times from people offering solar, and even though I'm in the industry, it can be a little bit sort of, I can get standoffish myself sometimes.
Definitely. Thank you.
Mr. Wade, thank you so much for presenting. Very clear, concise, you know, thumbs up all the way. When you were going over the programs, one of the ones that you were talking about was the Peak Smart Saver, and I think this is really important. Can you go back to that slide? So, on this one, it says up to 18 event days called per calendar year. I'm really encouraging the public to participate in these programs. I think this is one of the better programs that is available to anybody. 18 days, when I was explaining it to people, it seemed really high for them. What is the average on this?
Yeah, so, good question. Thank you for the question. We haven't, this is a pilot for us, and by the way, this is sort of building upon a program that SDG&E previously offered, and it no longer does to these customers. We think that's a high estimate. We're thinking that's probably going to be half of that. We really are looking for this to happen during the summer and in the fall. As you know, hot weather has been, become sort of a year-round possibility, but I'm guessing it's going to be more on that, 50% of that number. That's my...
And I remember I was discussing it, it was close to six to nine days, depending on what the estimate is. And I just want to bring that to the public's attention, because this looks like a high number, but participating in these programs, I think, will be a big benefit to the grid, to energy at CEA, and for the customer as well, so.
And one thing I would like to point out, is customers today, even without enrolling in a program, can save money by avoiding that 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. time. I know that's a difficult ask, but if you can, at all costs, watch your clock, because...
And the OM Connect program, which is another one, I really encourage people to do that too. So, that's something I'll speak to later, but just want to bring that up.
That's also on our website, under Programs.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have a report out of closed session?
No closed session report. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Non-agenda public comments?
Yes, we have three speakers this evening. First, Maria Wallace.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Maria, and I have lived in this city for many years. Last Friday evening, there was a huge immigration raid in South Park, led by HSI, Homeland Security Investigations. They show up in full military gear. They deploy flashbang grenades against community members. They look like they were showing up into a war zone. I don't want this to happen here in Escondido. I am a District 1 resident, and I know my councilmember, Consuelo Martinez, has been an ally to the undocumented community for decades. But the rest of you, what are you doing? I have not heard any discussion on council on this issue. Their powers that you have as councilmembers to protect the most vulnerable community members that are living in fear. I want the four of you Republican elected to answer publicly if you support the Trump administration actions with deportations. If you're going to stand with, protect Escondido's undocumented community. Silence is not an option. We're falling into a dictatorship. I am an immigrant. Immigrants are not criminals. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lea Sakfield.
Good evening, Mayor White, city councilmembers, and the public. I just want to take a moment to thank you, Mayor White, for your confidence in me and... what's the word I'm looking for?
Appointed.
Appointment. Thank you for appointing me to the Public Arts Commission. I will do a great job for you. I love this community, and I'm really excited to do that. And lastly, I would like to take the opportunity to congratulate Karina for the wonderful accolades that she's receiving as a County Teacher of the Year. As a former deputy superintendent, I can tell you that's a really big deal, and something that I hope all of you will be promoting out into the community, that we have a County Teacher of the Year, and that our public schools in Escondido are thriving. So, thank you very much.
Her next speaker is Michael Johnson.
Yeah, my name is Michael Johnson. You all know me, I'm pretty sure. I have been running the farmers' market in Escondido here on Sundays, a hidden farmers' market. So, for health reasons, I have to actually step down from that, so I'm transferring it over to another nonprofit. The people that run the Point Loma Farmers Market, they run the market on Thursdays and Penasquitos. So, we've kind of hit a delay. We wanted to continue seamlessly, just continue the market being open, but the city's kind of delaying our permit. The Economic Development Department kind of has been stringing us along for at least the last two years about, like, what it's going to take to have a permit to use that space. So, we did actually have a permit, like a temporary use permit, that we paid for, and we ran for about a year and a half. And we just asked, all we asked was, hey, can we just continue doing that? Because it was fine. It was affordable. You know, we're nonprofits, so we don't have a lot of money, and starting a brand-new farmers' market is daunting. Like, it's been, you know, thousands of dollars and hours of, you know, work to get it going, and we want to continue to do that, but, you know, right now, we're being delayed. We just, I'm trying to ask, you know, the city council if you could maybe step up on our behalf and maybe go to the Economic Development Department and just, hey, just tell them, hey, can you please just extend the permit that we already had that was affordable, you know, for a nonprofit, so that they can continue to, like, bring something to the city that I think elevates the city? You know, it's, I don't know if you know this, but, you know, Escondido's a little bit of a food desert. There's a lot of food options, and there's a lot of lack of education on, like, what good food is, you know, for children. And if you really think about it, like, you go to all the farmers' markets by the coast, most of those farmers and a lot of the vendors, they come from Escondido, but they don't sell in their own city, you know, because, you know, on Tuesday, there's that market, and that's great, you know, and they're still, they're actually still operating, but we've been told that we can operate until we meet some new kind of qualification or something. I don't know. There's not really any clarity on that. So, I'm kind of asking you all to, if you could maybe, on our behalf, step up and maybe help us to transition for the new people to take over and just continue running the market, you know. We're trying to bring, like, good, you know, farms and food to Escondido, because we need it, you know. It's lacking. And for such a big city to not have, you know, a bigger, more robust market, you know, it's, you know, we need some support, and that's all I'm asking, if you guys can help us out. Thank you.
No further public comments on this side.
Is everyone here for your thing? Do you know? Do you want to do it now instead of the end? Okay, perfect. We'll move on to the proclamation.
Well, hi, everyone, and thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to do this proclamation. So, I was, last week, I believe, I visited Pioneer School, which is in my district, and I was able to be in the classroom and see the students of Karina Martinez, surprise her that she was one of the San Diego County Teachers of the Year, and it was just a beautiful event, and I thought we need to recognize her here at the city. So, I'd like to invite Ms. Martinez and whoever you want to stand with, your family, to come up as I read the proclamation. And then we'll invite others up after the proclamation, and we'll invite you to say a few words. So, whereas the city of Escondido proudly recognizes exceptional educators who inspire, lead, and uplift the youth of our community, and whereas Karina Martinez, a dedicated educator at the Pioneer Elementary... and whereas Karina Martinez, a dedicated educator at the Pioneer Elementary School, has been named a 2025 San Diego County Teacher of the Year for her outstanding commitment to creating an inclusive, empathetic, and transformative learning environment. And whereas Ms. Martinez believes deeply in the power of love, trust, and student voice, designing meaningful learning experiences that empower students to connect with their community and the world around them. And whereas through a focus on social and emotional learning, environmental stewardship, student agency, Ms. Martinez nurtures the growth of well-rounded individuals prepared to become thoughtful, engaged citizens. And whereas her contributions extend beyond the classroom as she actively collaborates with local organizations, mentors, aspiring educators, and serves in key leadership roles at her school. And whereas her tireless efforts in compassionate leadership exemplify the highest ideals of the teaching profession and bring honor to the Escondido educational community. Now therefore, our Mayor Deng White, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Escondido, do by hereby proclaim June 4th, 2025 as Karina Martinez Day. And urge all citizens to join in celebrating her extraordinary achievements and dedication to our students, school, and community. Signed and sealed on this fourth day of June 2025. Congratulations.
Well, I'm used to talking to kids, not adults. But I will, I will do my very best here. And I, I usually don't write something, but of course I did because this is so special. So first of all, thank you everyone for your support. Thank you Deputy Mayor for your support. I'm, I'm truly grateful, not just for the recognition, but honestly, because it's not about me, it's shining the light on what we do here in USD, in Escondido, for all of our kids. And it really is just an honor for me to celebrate with my people right here. I have to say, this process has been extremely reflective. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of essays to write and things to think about, but through it all, it has led me like through a journey in the past of my own teachers, my teacher mentors when I was a baby teacher, my colleagues that I have right now, my leadership who supports me and being exactly who I want to be as an educator, who to be able to love my kids the way that I do. And it is hard work. And I feel like that work couldn't be done without them. My daughter come in today, you know, she's got her own job in school. These are college students. My husband has his own career. They're still packing my lunches and doing my meal prep and laminating and cutting and pasting and cleaning and all the crazy things. And fighting with the printer today after work and rushing around and it, it's all so crazy, but I can do it because of them. I can do it because of you guys. And the work really is for our kids. It's for our kids. And that is like the greatest joy for me that I get to, I get to be teaching and leading and connecting with my families and my kids and this community that I grew up in at the schools that I went to, that my kids went to, that my husband went to. It's such an honor for me to be here representing our people in this community. And I just feel like a regular schmegular girl. I go to work every day. I work with my kids. We, you know, we cry together, we work together, we make each other better. And I'm one of 24,000 people doing this every single day and this was my time. And I don't love it. I don't love the spotlight, but I am going to take, I'm going to take this opportunity and I'm going to shine a light on all of the work that we do together because it's my job now. That's my job. So, I don't know, just thank you. Thank you for supporting me and for being here, my people, when it's the end of the year and we're all dying. We're all dying. We're inching our way towards summer and, but this work that we do is so special and I can't, I just can't not take a minute and be grateful to you guys and our community and just, just know how much we love your kids. Like we love them so much and we give our whole heart to them and we will continue to do so, even if we're dying, even if we're tired, all the things. So thank you so much because this is, this recognition is not for me. It is for all of USD, for all of our schools, all of our teachers in San Diego County, in the state of California. Like it's bananas that it's me and I'm so, so humbled. But at the same time, I take it so seriously. I got you guys. And of course, I didn't read. I can't. I'm sorry. That's me teaching every day. We have a plan and then we go. So we're going to have my, the mayor and my council colleagues come. We'll do a pic photo and then we can say thank you.
Any else, um, friends, anyone else? Okay, everybody. Big smiles. One, two, three. Yay.
All right, now, one more. One, two, three, right here. One, two, three. And then I got one last one. I'm so sorry.
I'm asking.
She wants to.
I'm asking.
All right. One, two, three, one, two. Perfect. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you for that and congratulations again. We'll now move on to our consent calendar. Items one through 11 are on consent and unless somebody has an item to pull, I'll make a motion to approve items one through 11. All right. Please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved for zero.
All right. That brings us to item 12, City Position Vacancies and Recruitment and Retention Efforts.
Good evening, Your Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Jessica Perpetua, Director of Human Resources. Tonight, I'm going to be introducing and turning it over to Daniel Alvarado, our Human Resources Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Daniel Alvarado, Human Resources Manager. And my presentation this evening is regarding the city's vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts, specifically as a result of Assembly Bill 2561. Assembly Bill 2561 became effective January 1st, 2025. The law, which added Section 3502.3 to the California Government Code, requires public agencies to present on the status of vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts during a public hearing before their governing board at least once per fiscal year prior to the adoption of the final budget. The law also requires public agencies to present additional information regarding vacancies upon request by an employee organization if the vacancy rate with any bargaining unit is less, excuse me, at least 20% and allow employee organizations to make a presentation to City Council. The state legislature identified several problems leading to the creation of AB 2561, including job vacancies in local government are a widespread and significant problem for the public sector affecting occupations across wage levels and educational requirements. High job vacancies impact public service delivery and the workers who are forced to handle heavier workloads with understaffing leading to burnout and increased turnover that further exacerbates staffing challenges. Further, there is a statewide interest in ensuring that public agency operations are appropriately staffed and that high vacancy rates do not undermine public employee labor relations. The purpose of the bill was to promote transparency with vacancy data, encourage proactive strategies to fill vacancies, and support employee organizations by providing employee input on staffing issues. As it relates to the City of Escondido, the city has 838 full-time positions budgeted with 60 of these positions vacant as of May 12th, 2025 for an approximately 7.1% vacancy rate. Current vacancy rates by employee group, you'll see the Escondido Police Officers Association non-sworn has the highest vacancy rate on a percentage basis at approximately 17.5%. From left to right, we have the Teamsters 911 Administrative Clerical Engineering with 84 positions and nine vacancies, giving them 10.71% vacancy. The Teamsters 911 Maintenance and Operations Group has 189 positions, 12 vacancies, with a 6.35% vacancy rate. The Escondido City Employees Association Supervisor Group has 46 positions, six vacancies, giving them 13.04% vacancy rate. The Escondido Police Officers Association has 153 positions with two vacancies and a 1.31% vacancy rate. As mentioned, the Escondido Police Officers Association non-sworn, they have 40 positions with seven vacancies, giving them the 17.5% vacancy rate. The Escondido Firefighters Association Safety and Non-Safety Group has 105 positions, three vacancies, for 2.86% vacancy rate. For the calendar year 2024, here are some statistics of recruitment activities performed by our personnel team. We had 161 recruitments opened, 5,660, excuse me, 5,660 applications received. 1,294 candidates were tested, including written exams, practical assessments, and interviews, resulting in 248 hires being processed. And for the calendar year 2025, year-to-date, we have 77 recruitments open, 3,172 applications received, 528 candidates tested, including written exams, practical assessments, and interviews, resulting in 95 hires being processed. As it relates to recruitment efforts, the Human Resources Department works with operating departments to prioritize upcoming recruitments and ensure the city meets staffing needs. We post all job announcements on the city's website as well as governmentjobs.com, careersingovernment.com, and indeed.com to attract qualified applicants. We also submit postings to industry-specific websites as appropriate. And additionally, Human Resources accepts online interest cards that notify candidates when the city initiates a recruitment related to their interests. Human Resources has also recently worked with the city's communications team to begin adding recruitment-related posts to the city's social media accounts to further engage and attract qualified candidates and enhance the city's branding as an employer of choice. One area that we plan to have a greater presence in the coming year is attendance at more career fairs in order to promote the City of Escondido employment opportunities. Last, the city participates and works with local schools or individuals to provide internship opportunities as the need arises. To assist with retention efforts, Human Resources regularly reviews salary structures to remain competitive. This may be done when we are experiencing harder recruit for positions or seeing labor market fluctuations. As you're aware, the city last year also implemented a comprehensive classification and compensation study for all classifications. We also strive to maintain competitive benefits. Human Resources conducts benefit surveys with comparable agencies and meets with the city's benefits broker on a regular basis to discuss current and future benefits trends, issues, and concerns. To develop and retain top talent, we provide annual training and development by way of hosting a five-day Supervisors Academy for new or aspiring supervisors and an eight-day Management Academy for managers and directors. We also provide, regularly provide promotional opportunities for both our temporary, part-time, and regular full-time staff. Next steps, as this is an annual presentation, Human Resources will continue to monitor vacancy rates for each employee labor group. And at the end of each calendar year, if a vacancy rate for any particular labor group reaches 20%, we will provide notification to them for their awareness. We will also evaluate any necessary changes to policies, procedures, and recruitment activities identified as obstacles in the hiring process. Last, we will continue to provide this presentation to you on an annual basis in compliance with AB 2561. That concludes the presentation. I'm available for any questions if you have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this one?
None.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for the information. Just off the top, I noticed that there's a lot of applications being received and a few of them being processed. Can you share any kind of trend that you're seeing? Are you getting a lot of applicants that don't meet minimum qualifications? Anything that you can share on why, you know, we're getting a high number, but it's not necessarily translating to a lot of processed applications?
Yeah, that, that's very often the case is we receive lots of applications for many recruitments, but we always screen them to minimum qualifications and narrow that down through the process. As I mentioned, there's various exams that we go through, whether they're physical assessments, written exams, interviews. So that number gets whittled down eventually to fill the, the vacancy. And so, yeah, there, there could be a number of applicants and many of them are for part-time positions as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to add on that as well, oftentimes we'll have one vacancy, so we'll be recruiting for one specific position. We'll have hundreds of people apply for one vacancy. So that will just add to the number of people applying, but then hired is lower just because the specific position they're applying for, there's only one opportunity.
Thank you for the presentation. Very informative, very concise. I appreciate it. Speaking of piggybacking off that, can you go back to the slide that shows the, the trend? It's one of the earlier ones that talked about this one right here. So we're looking at recruitments opened and then we're looking at the hires processed. Can you explain the difference between, I guess, what the recruitments opened is versus higher process? Because to me, it's a little bit counterintuitive.
Sure. So the recruitments opened, you see 161 versus hires processed 248. So there, there may be at times a recruitment that's open, but to the opposite is we have, may have multiple vacancies. So one recruitment filling multiple positions or turnover, which we have established lists for, that we'll, we'll pull from that list to fill the, fill the same vacancy.
Yep. So again, like Daniel said, so on the flip side of my earlier comment, it's a police officer vacancy. We can be recruiting for one recruitment and hire five people.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say that I really appreciate the presentation and especially with the, what you showed on the recruitment efforts and the retention efforts. Because again, we want to be able to keep those employees. It's all well thought out, so good job, Daniel and Jessica. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right. Item 13 has been continued to the June 25th City Council meeting. So that takes us to future agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to a future agenda? And if not, we'll go to councilmember subcommittee reports and start with councilmember.
I would like to, yes, I would like to motion to add something to a future agenda. Please. If I could motion to have a presentation by the California Commission for the EGAP, just for an update to see where we're at on that and just to, so if I could have, ask somebody to second. It's a.
Councilmember, what's an EGAP?
The Escondido Growers for Agriculture Preservation.
Oh, got it. So you want a presentation from them?
Right.
Okay.
Just an update. Just an updated, uh, updated presentation.
I'll second your.
Thank you.
Okay. Now you can go to subcommittee reports.
All right. Um, this weekend I went to an open house demonstration for the Palomar Hot Shots. So they're the ones who travel all throughout California and the nation. I didn't realize that they traveled throughout the nation. They did respond to the Palisades Fire and a big fire that they had in Georgia. So it was really quite impressive. Let's see. Also going hand in hand with what we're promoting here in the city with AgTech, uh, the mayor and my colleague, deputy mayor, Consola Martinez, we went to Escondido High School where they had just a showcase of their AgTech program, which is really unique to that school. So I'm hoping that other schools maybe over the summer will really encourage their students to go and participate in that and hopefully that'll grow into something more and, and in other schools as well. Uh, just as a reminder, Discovery Children's Museum is going to be celebrating their 25th anniversary, uh, being open here in Escondido on the 25th. And I think it'd be great to, to go out there and show the support. And then also, um, I really want to give out a shout out and kudos to, uh, the code compliance manager, Anthony Mullins and his staff. I really think it's important for the city to know, the citizens to know what, how staff is working hard behind the scenes to keep our city, um, safe. So we just received a report that they were eight encampments that imposed public safety issues and ma- major health hazards. Some were by high schools, some were by residents, and they just went out there and cleaned it up and really changed the environment for the community. So again, you don't see it out there. It's not posted, but I really think it's important that the community know just how hard, um, the city employees are working to, to make your city safe. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilman Garcia?
Yes, thank you. Um, so last week we had a Clean Energy Alliance presentation. Uh, we covered quite a bit of what we, what was covered today. I do appreciate what, um, what Mr. Wade had covered. One of the things I'm really trying to educate and encourage people to do this summer is to join those programs, the two that are available to pretty much everybody in the public is the OM Connect Program and then the Peak, uh, the Peak Smart Saver Program. The OM Connect Program, it's a great program. I'm, I'm enrolled in both of them. The OM Connect, essentially what they do is that they give you a heads up when there's going to be a super peak hour. Um, you get a notification via email or text and they'd say, hey, between eight to nine or between eight to 10 tomorrow or today, um, they'll tell you which day, um, there's going to be a super peak hour. Advises you turn off everything you can, you know, go for a walk, do whatever. Great way, very easy way to save money. Uh, the Peak Smart Program, as we mentioned, you're just enrolled in the program, uh, you save up to 30% um, off of most hours. And the only thing that you do is during those really hot days or really cold days that there's a lot of energy use, you essentially opt out of it. So that's a great time to go to the mall, go for a walk, go to the beach, go to the pool. But please, I encourage everybody to join those programs. So that's something we talked about and as always, thank you to my community for the privilege of serving.
All right. Um, yeah, so that going to Escondido High, I graduated there. It was really exciting to see all the things that the students are doing there. Had a tour of the livestock, the plants. They sell lots of cool plants and succulents and they also have a farmer's market there that's student run. So we actually have, um, we'll have four farmer's market. Hopefully yours will continue to operate. Definitely support having more farmer's markets in our community. So really excited to have gone that tour and just see all the changes that they're making there. And they will be at the, I still call it the Delmar Fair, but technically the San Diego County Fair. They, the students will be there selling, um, their livestock. Um, I had an opportunity to visit the A Step Beyond's end of the school year showcase at the Center for the Arts. They did, um, they performed on Friday and Saturday and it was just an amazing, beautiful performance and it was really cool to see that alumni from the program that's been in, it's been in effect 11 years and they follow these students from fourth grade till they graduate. The alumni that had already graduated, I believe last year was their first graduating class, um, they come back and help. So I think that's just a beautiful thing. Um, I also attended the Musica en la Plaza with Grupo Bella and luckily the weather cooled down. So it was a beautiful evening of wonderful music and dancing. Monday I had the honor to install the officers for the Women's Club. So the Women's Club is one of our oldest organizations in Escondido. And, um, also this, June is Pride Month, so happy Pride Month. Um, I will be participating this Saturday in the, um, our North County Pride Event is actually in Oceanside. It's called Pride at the Beach. So if anyone's interested, from 12, um, till I believe six o'clock, um, is the event Saturday at the Oceanside Civic Center. And, um, yeah, and again, congratulations to Ms. Martinez. Really excited that we could honor you today and thank you so much. That's all I have for today.
The library is now reopened in the mall. I'd encourage everybody to stop by and see it and get a library card if you do not have one. And June 13th at 5:30 PM on the corner of Grand and Broadway is the grand reopening of Grand Avenue. And following that will be the opening night of Cruisin' Grand and I hope to see you all there. City manager?
You just announced what I was going to announce, Mr. Mayor, so thank you. Have a good night.
Any other comments?
None.
This meeting's adjourned.